Has a brief message.
Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the building is closed. However, our residents have several ways to watch the meetings and stay in touch with the council. They can view the meetings using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using Gramercy's. The public may also always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to G Y Council at Goodyear A Z dot gov.
Thank you very much. And before we go to the agenda, I just want to remind the people that are listening, all items listed are for discussion only. We will take no action and can nor will we be taken from them. All right, on the agenda, we only have one item tonight. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer our questions. So the first item is a presentation on the city's status as a C D B G entitlement community. Grants and neighborhood services supervisor Christina Ponte Tesco will present.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As the mayor said, I'm here tonight to talk about C D B G because we've received a letter from the county. Our three-year agreement with them will be expiring in June, and so we have the option to renew our membership in the urban county, or, there we go, or pursue entitlement status. So first off, I'll be reviewing what is C D B G, and then I'll go over how C D B G funds come to the city. I'll review the constraints on the program, and then some advantages and disadvantages for both remaining in the urban county and pursuing entitlement status. C D B G is a federal grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It stands for Community Development Block Grant, and the purpose of the grant is to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, primarily to low and moderate income people. C D B G funds are distributed in two ways to the cities, either through the urban county program, which is how we participate right now, or in as an entitlement community directly to the city. As a part of the urban county, we participate with Maricopa County. You can see on this slide here a list of the other cities that participate with us. And Maricopa County as the designated urban county then provides a competitive grant application process for those member cities. You'll see that we're the largest participating city listed there. And the C D A C, or Community Development Advisory Committee, reviews those applications. Currently, Brandon represents, Councilmember Hampton represents us on the C D A C, and Councilmember Campbell has spent many years, I know, representing our city in that organization. They review the applications and make a recommendation for funding levels to the county board of supervisors. So what it looks like visually is this. HUD makes an annual allocation to the county, and the county is responsible for submitting a five-year consolidated plan to HUD. HUD approves that five-year consolidated plan, and then they're response, the county's responsible for developing an annual action plan, which explains how that upcoming year's funds will be spent. They are responsible for the CAPR, which is a performance reporting, all environmental and labor compliance obligations. ITIS is the financial reporting. So you'll see there's quite a bit of administrative effort that goes into it. And then Maricopa County uses, has elected to use the C D A C, which Goodyear has a seat on, to consider projects and programs against the priorities they've identified to fund. And Goodyear, in the case of this year, for example, is a recipient, where the county could provide those programs and projects as well. The county then audits the city of Goodyear, and HUD audits Maricopa County. In order to be an entitlement community, you have to be invited formally by HUD, and then it's a standing invitation. It's based on your housing stock, population, and poverty rates. Goodyear was first invited in 2008, but since then, we've continued on with our arrangement with the urban county, which we last renewed in 2017. And as I mentioned, it's set to expire on June 30th, 2021. If we were to pursue entitlement status, the city would receive an annual allocation directly from HUD. So what it would look like is this. HUD would give the allocation directly to the city of Goodyear, and the city of Goodyear would be responsible for that five-year consolidated plan and annual action planning. They'd be responsible for all of the administrative overhead. And then our council could decide, based on the contents of our five-year plan, what projects and programs to fund. They could be city projects and programs, or we could pass funds along to a subrecipient to implement. But if we did that, we would be on the hook for their performance, because HUD will be auditing us, and we're responsible for auditing any subrecipients. So the question before us is, do we want to decline entitlement status and continue to compete in the urban county program, or accept entitlement status and begin to administer the C D B G program on our own? And here you'll see a list of the current Maricopa County communities that are entitlement, along with the not entitlement communities that we compete against as a part of the urban county. Considerations that are worthy of factoring into your decision and discussion are the level of funding that the city would receive, the types of projects and programs that we have in our pipeline, and the administrative burden and our capacity to oversee that. The level of funding that the city of Goodyear would have received if we were entitlement in this fiscal year is $424,000 estimated per HUD. This fiscal year, through the competitive process at C D A C, we were awarded $303,200. You may remember, we submitted two applications this year, one for the North Subdivision Streetlights, and the other for the Baby Pool Conversion. Both were eligible projects, and the county C D A C elected to fund, partially fund, the North Subdivision Streetlight Program. The previous two years, we did not apply. My understanding is that is because the, because staff was not able to identify eligible projects that would have met the expectations of C D A C in terms of their priorities. So regardless of whether you're an entitlement community, or you're part of the urban county, there are constraints on what kind of projects these dollars can be used for. And the first order of business is that they have to meet a national objective. And for the majority of the funds, that national objective applies to serving low-mod individuals, and those would be people with 80% or less area median income. In addition to that, you can do projects that eliminate or prevent slum and blight. And in the cases of right now, for an example, where there's a national emergency, that's where the urgent need comes into play. You're also allowed to use a portion of the funds for administrative costs. So regardless of whether you're, oop, went too fast. Regardless of whether you're urban county or entitlement, your projects need to be eligible and meet that national objective, and they need to conform to national C D B G process and program implementation standards, spending caps, and oversights. And then they need to be relevant to the recipient agency's five-year consolidated plan. And for C D A C, that five-year consolidated plan prioritizes public safety, general infrastructure, public facilities, and community centers, for example. So that's why our streetlight project scored better than the Baby Pool Conversion Project, even though both are eligible initiatives. From the discussion at that committee meeting, it was evident that it would be unlikely that the current C D A C would ever fund the Baby Pool Conversion Project, because it didn't align with their priorities. But it's an allowable project. So if we were an entitlement community, what changes is it needs to be relevant to our five-year consolidated plan, and it aligns with Goodyear priorities. So there are also caps on the amount of funds that can be used for different parts of those national objectives. So to use round numbers, if we were to get an allocation of $400,000, we could use up to 20% for administrative expenses. And then that would leave $320,000, using this example, for programs and projects. Of that $320,000, at least 70,000, or at least 70% of it needs to be spent on low-mod income projects. So what that looks like is $224,000 minimum in this example. And then if we wanted to use the remainder for slum and blight or urgent need, we could. Or we could use up to 15% of the total award for public services, which is basically like direct services that you might think of, like utility assistance, for example. So again, the example is that HUD gives an annual allocation to a direct recipient who is responsible for developing a five-year plan and, and a pretty intensive administrative burden. They use that five-year plan to identify projects and programs to spend the money on, and they get audited by HUD. And if they use any subrecipients, they're responsible for the performance and compliance of the subrecipients. Currently, as a part of the urban county, we participate in the environmental review. We contribute to the consolidated plan. We contribute content to the performance reporting, which is CAPR. We do quarterly reports. We're responsible for grant management duties like contracts, record keeping, Davis Bacon, financial reporting, and we get audited by the county. This will be my first time living through an entire C D B G implementation, but I understand from Katie and Alex that it's estimated to take about 10% of the staff leads time. If we were to pursue entitlement status, the administration includes, before we even get started, we'll need to get working on a five-year consolidated plan. That plan looks deeply at affordable housing, homelessness, and impediments to fair housing in our community, and it helps to identify community development needs, priorities, and activities. Then if you'll remember, that five-year plan is what informs our annual action planning, because it's those, whatever is raised in that five-year plan is what you would ideally be responding to with your annual action plan. And then we'd also need to develop policies and procedures to ensure that we have the good internal controls to be responsible recipients of that amount of federal funds. It's estimated, based on talking to Surprise in Avondale, that we could do that five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan, and some get support from a contractor with policies and procedures for $50,000 or less. And C D B G does allow administrative costs. This would be pre-award. So there is the option to recoup those, or to just save the administrative costs for implementation. After that, there's the ongoing burden of an annual action plan, the CAPR, the financial reporting, environmental reviews, labor compliance, fair housing, training, and complaints, and we will be audited by HUD. This is recommended for a full-time employee at some point because of that administrative burden. But at this point, we feel that whether or not we need an employee depends on what sort of projects we decide we want to pursue, and if there's any subrecipient monitoring that needs to take place. If it gets more complex, there would be a need for an employee. But for getting this initiative, standing up, doing that five-year consolidated plan, and the annual planning, and, and the policies and procedures, and if we keep it simple, like we do now, where we're funding one major C I P-type project, we may not need to hire an employee. If we did, though, it's important that you understand that those administrative costs being capped at 20% would not, at this point, cover the estimated total cost of $150,000. We'd only have about $84,000. So the advantages and disadvantages of each. If you were to remain with the urban county, the advantages are that the county does most of the work, and they most certainly do the heavy lifting. So it can easily be managed by current staff, and there is a bigger pool of resources to absorb those capped activities. So if we wanted to do something that was slum and blight, or we could use a larger chunk of a larger pool of money. The disadvantages are that the, as you saw, the city's not guaranteed funding each year, and project funding is bound by the C D A C priorities, not our own, and the city can't use any funds for administrative costs. If we were to pursue entitlement status, we would be guaranteed annual funding based on the federal budget each year, and up to 20% could be used for administrative costs. There'd be a lot more flexibility in the types of projects that we could do. And I hadn't mentioned this yet, but it does open the door to something called a Section 108 loan program. It's a totally different program application for us, but the tie is that it uses your entitlement allocation as a basis. And you can borrow up to five times that at a low interest to do projects that would otherwise also be eligible, meeting those national objectives. The disadvantages are, there is definitely an intensive startup effort, and at some point, we will need a dedicated staff person as, as the funds get bigger and the projects get more complex. And currently, that administrative cost wouldn't cover it. With all of that said, staff's recommendation is to accept HUD's invitation to become an entitlement community grantee effective fiscal year 2020, and separate from the urban county. With that, I will turn it over to you all for discussion, and do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Who would like to start? Don't everybody raise your hand at one time. Bill?
I've been writing my questions, and now I need my glasses to see what I've written. Sorry. I have a few, and they're all over the place. Is food bank support an eligible project?
It would be a direct service, it would be a public service one, depending on the nature of the project, but yes.
So using a real-life example, the, the food bank needs a new freezer. It's $10,000. We could theoretically, to keep this, to keep it simple, we could purchase a freezer under that program for the food bank, because it's easy to audit.
Yeah, it, that's where it starts to get complicated, because there are disposal requirements. So that freezer, we need to know where that freezer is for the rest of that freezer's life.
Right. Okay. But it's in that giant circle. Okay. The second question is, if we don't use it all of our entitlement funding, or if we say, we're going to do this project in three years, and we're going to, stockpiling, I'm going to use that word, allowed, say $400,000 this year, $400,000 the next year, $400,000 in the third year, and then you do this $1.2 million project? Is that allowed?
You may remember back when we returned some money to the county. Yeah, there's a limit. You can only have one and a half times your allocation. So it depends how much is left.
Oh, okay.
So whatever's not used from your this-year allocation by the time you come to next year, as long as you don't have a total of one and a half times next year's allocation, then you can re-obligate what's left in your pot.
So there is some variation of my term, stockpiling. Okay.
Yes. And there's that loan available also.
Right. Is anyone in the valley not an entitlement and/or not in C D B, in the C D A C? Is there anyone who's not doing either?
Well, there are some cities that get mentioned at C D A C that they're sitting out, like Fountain Hills, I feel like is one of them. I think when you do that, you may have the option of competing at this state.
Got it. Okay. Final question. I feel like I'm on Who Wants to be a Millionaire. So if, and you may not be able to answer this, but if this is for us to start on July 1st of '21, which is the end of this upcoming fiscal year, we need to have that consultant onboard in this upcoming fiscal year to do the five-year consolidated plan, et cetera, before July 1?
So the feds operate on the October, September fiscal year, so it gets confusing. It's the program year, 2022, so it'd be effective October 2021. So it'd be like August 2021 that, that, that five-year plan would be due.
So if it's August, and our year starts July 1, it seems to me we're going to have to start earlier. Is that?
Yes. If we want the $50,000, we'll have to make sure that we have it in this year's upcoming fiscal year budget.
Right. And was that included in the budget stuff that we saw last week?
No.
I didn't think so. I mean,
There's still opportunity.
I didn't, I don't want to, it's $50,000, so I mean, it's not, not a big chunk. Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. Personally, I wanted to do this, and I'm looking at Katie in the back, I wanted to do this like eight years ago. So I think, I think it's time, and we've got a lot of needs we've not been able to meet. And, and I think the process of C D A C really makes you really decide whether it's worth the effort. And we've had projects that have been worthy, but weren't worth the effort of the fight versus we've got this entitlement, and now we can get the things done that we want to get done year after year. And I think it's, it's certainly time for us as a community to do that. Thank you.
Joe?
You know, I'm going to go the opposite. I prefer them doing the heavy lifting. I prefer us not to take the next step and all the additional work that's going to be needed by bringing in staff to do these projects. I don't think we're ready for it yet. That's my own personal view. And I would like to, I'd hate to see us expand and hire staff and make that all internally to do that.
Sherry?
I have a couple of questions, and one was very similar to one of Bill's questions, because I noticed a couple of years on the C D A C, we, we got zero, or didn't request any. So if we had a phased project, not stockpiling, but if we had a phased project that we know would go over five to six years, could we use our allotment in that manner?
Yes. Like, an example would be the waterline projects. We did that with C D A C's approval over the years, but we'd get to use the full, if we chose, we could use the full allocation towards that project.
So if we had a five-year project, we could say, we're going to do this many water, I'm just using water lines again as an example, this many, this many, this many, until we get the project done.
Right.
And last?
It would also have to fit with the consolidated plan,
Yeah.
which we have an opportunity to influence as we're developing the five-year plan, along with the community expressing what the needs are.
But that's our needs and everything, so we kind of get a, and then the other question is, with the federal money, we keep hearing about different stimulus. Before, it was like, everything was, we're going to stop community block, we're going to stop, we're going to stop, we're going to stop. Now, we're hearing talk again of, we want to get money to the communities, which, or have you heard which way more federal money would be easier for us to access the money?
So there's the Community Development Block Grant, and then there's the Community Services Block Grant. And I'm not sure we can follow up with Jenna, maybe, but I know C S V G, Community Services Block Grant, tends to be more volatile, and C D B G, Community Development Block Grant, I understand, tends to be more stable.
And then I got one more question. Is the amount that we're given, is that population-based, or how do they determine that amount?
It is population, housing conditions, and poverty levels.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I agree with the staff's recommendation. I think it gives us a chance to kind of like write our own future, and kind of phase in what we want to do, and have a little bit more certainty with, rather than the competing, and we don't get one, something one year. If we had a phased project, it might be another two years till we could get the money. And so I think I like your recommendation is, is the way to go. The question is about the staff person. That isn't someone we need this fiscal year yet.
No.
Okay. So we do have a little bit of a window on that.
Right. I, I, knowing that there's a lot I don't know that I don't know, because I haven't even lived through a C D B G, I feel like I'll have the experience of this one that we're implementing right now with the county's support, and I'll try to learn that. Plus, I'll be working on the consolidated plan, so I'll have the ins and outs of the rules of the program, and the scope, and the potential for things. And then if we start sub-awarding to people, that's when I, I, I start to get nervous, because that's beyond, that's, I think, when you need a staff person who can be paying more attention to than a project manager in engineering.
I, I get you. That's more like, because then you have to audit the sub-grantee. Okay, no, I, I agree with your recommendation. So thank you.
Next? Go ahead, Brandon.
So yeah, I think to Bill's point, when I first got on the C D A C, I was wondering why we weren't already part of the other group. But I had a quick question. How many staff members do you foresee us using in the future? I mean, is it one? Everybody is, I thought most of them only have one dedicated person, or is it more than one?
Just one in any time in the near future.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah, I didn't know Tempe, or Chandler, or those other companies, or those other cities, if they have more than one staff person managing.
And again, as we grow, and depending on how much money we actually, like you said, millions of dollars, then we might need a little bit more help. But right now, Christina has an employee, Kim, in her division also. So there, there's two of them.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then we can't go back, right? Once we say we want to be entitled, we can't go backwards and say, hey, please let us back in. Our, our population went down for some reason, and now we want to come back to C D A C?
I think, I mean, it's a three-year agreement. So if we decided that we wanted to approach the county again, and basically what happens when we leave the county is we take our share of the pot of money that they're allocating each year. So they would get that pot back, and then they would administer it. We would compete for it.
Okay. Yeah, I do like that it's more dedicated. I mean, being there at C D A C, I mean, some of the phased projects, like, for example, like Youngtown, they had a phased project, and they only got like Phase Two done, and they had like six more phases to do, and they got turned down at least two years in a row. So at least this way, we would get more control of our own destiny in a way, and be able to finish some of those waterline projects, more consistent funding sources. You can hopefully somewhat depend on whatever the county, wherever they actually send us, but more, more reliable in a way, and could control our own destiny. At least we can do more things than, or things that we want to do, that our city actually needs as a Things that we want to do that our city actually needs as opposed to hoping and try to align with what the county wants. So I think... Yeah. Because I know originally... I remember this last presentation on this. And it wasn't... You guys advocated for staying in. So now the dollar amount is higher. It does make more sense that we would want to do it now. So I'm onboard with going and being an entitlement city. So I think there's a lot of better pros than... Yeah. Thank you.
Laura?
Can we look at Slide 21, please? On the entitlement funding example?
Christine.
So the bulk of the money goes to the low mod.
Yes.
What exactly can you do? Can you give some examples of what that would look like?
Yeah. I can't get the slide to go... Wrong way. I can't read that far.
It goes forward.
Okay. So examples of low-mod projects would be home rehab for owner-occupied housing that allows people to stay in their homes. It would be anything that affects an area that's 51% or greater low-mod, based on census tract. It would... So it could be directly to a person who is income-eligible or to an area that's income-eligible. Or there are presumed populations. And that would include the elderly and disabled. So if you were to put like adapted equipment on a playground, the people who are going to use the adapted equipment are disabled people. Therefore, you're serving the disabled people with that. You do have to think about the senior... For example, if you were doing something to serve the senior population, you have to be conscientious of the fact that it would seem to be the more vulnerable senior population. Does that answer the question?
That helps. I was looking at these examples and then comparing it to what came up in the Goodyear Community Assessment in 2019. And a lot of that, the recommendations or the identified gaps, had to do with food insecurity, access to mental health, activities that support family, resources for homeless, service for minorities, transportation, and things like that. Would that fall into this low-mod category?
The... It would depend on the activity. And then it would depend on the activity. So if you were to build a senior center, for example, that would be low-mod. But if you were to do home deliver... Or a congregate lunch program as a part of that senior center, that would be the direct service capped at the 48,000, using the example.
Okay. It's quite complicated, apparently.
Right. Which is why the more complex that it gets, we would need a staff person to make sure we're following all the rules. But if we keep it simple, we should be good.
So historically, our CDBG funding has all been for infrastructure and not necessarily direct services to vulnerable populations.
Correct.
And we did not apply for the two years prior to. And was that because we didn't have projects that fit the box?
Correct.
Okay. It wasn't because we didn't identify needs?
We had projects, but they weren't ones that would have satisfied CEDAC's priorities. Right. So we might have scored lower one year. Yeah. Because if you still have money in your pot. And also, from what I understand, the CEDAC doesn't take well to coming every year. They feel like you should share the wealth.
Okay.
So everybody gets...
If we look at Slide 24 that talks about the entitlement administration and the five-year consolidated plan? There it is. What would be the process do you envision for creating the five-year consolidated plan?
It's very extensive. We would hire a consultant. We could build off of what we already have from the community assessment. There's a public process component. They'll look at our housing stock. They'll look at... Like, in the assessment, you saw housing cost burden. They'll look at things like that.
Okay.
And then we'll have to go to the public and ask them what their thoughts are, what solutions they like around the different areas.
Okay. And the reason why we have to decide now? Because we're still a member for the next year, correct? The next fiscal year? But we have to decide now because of the federal calendar? Is that correct? In the lead time?
Yeah. The county needs to get back to the feds with their end of the deal. So we need to let the county know if we're a part of their equation.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just concerned... One of my concerns is the timing of an additional position because of... I know there was other positions asked for in this budget year. We still face an uncertain future and not quite sure how that would all fit in. So... Okay. Thank you.
Wally?
Well, I was very surprised when this came forward because I had not had any conversations regarding why we would want to do this. It has been my experience sitting on the committee since maybe 2011, until Brandon came onboard and I gave him my seat. It's been difficult for us to find projects that are eligible for CBDDG. We did not have a huge population of low-income or really old neighborhoods. We have no downtown blight. We have no... None of the things that all the other cities that are getting funded have. So we were at a disadvantage. And I'm not comfortable in going forward for a couple of reasons. Number one, we'll never know exactly how much we're going to get because the CBDDG funds comes from the federal government. And every year at the budget times, they threaten to cut those funds. Because every year, I'm down there writing letters to Congress saying, "Don't cut those funds. They're so critical." But they're more critical to a lot of the cities, more critical to them than to me and my city. Because we're a fairly young city. We, right now, don't have a huge homeless population problem. True, we don't have a senior center. But senior centers used to be built by CBDDG funds. And then the government came and said, "You could not spend those funds on that particular building, a senior center," because... I forgot now why they told us. So that's why I'm just not comfortable... I don't know that we're going to get 400,000 every year, even though they say we could get up to estimated. Could be less. And I just don't know. We get... Our residents get utility assistance through Care First in Avondale. And the money, of course, is allocated between Avondale and Goodyear. But then, that's the way it should be. So I'm with Joe. I don't think we're ready for it. I don't see that we have that... We don't have an affordable housing unit built in our city yet. I guess we could build one if we got the money. But I don't know. I'm just really torn with this. Because... And I wanted to ask Katie a bunch of questions, but I wasn't able to get her. So I don't have anything else to say.
And Bill, you have additional information or questions?
Let me back up to the staff member discussion. The impression that I got from you, Christina, was that if we made this complicated in years going forward, that would be the activation point for a staff member. So we keep it simple. We keep moving forward. We're doing that with in-house staff. Because I think you said two things. You talked about a 10% job requirement. And then you talked about a full-time per... Takes about 10% of someone's time.
Mm-hmm. Urban County.
Oh, there you go. So... And did you say that that 10% should theoretically carry over? If we were to take it on ourselves, did you think that number was going to be higher? Or do you think you and your staff are going to be able to do it with what you got?
I think it will be higher. But I think my staff and I will be able to. As the grants supervisor, I see it in line with my workload as long as...
So when we set the five-year plan, we will know how complicated we've made it to whether that would activate a staff member or not?
Exactly. And we could prioritize according to
Right.
our available resources and priority... Because that's how you set priorities, right?
Right. So that's the staff... I think the staff load. When we talk about going forward, what... How much staff does it look at? The other thing that I think we should be considering are the number of things that we didn't do or couldn't do because of the constraints that were put onto us by CEDAC itself. If CEDAC says you can only do these 10 things, but there are 20 things available, 10 of them weren't even available to us. So I don't know that we even know what good we could do in the community until we take this step forward. Is that...
Yeah. I can't look forward as well as I can look backwards. And I... The Western Avenue real estate costs would have been an allowable expense. That was so...
Yeah. For an improvement in that particular area.
Yeah. It would have been capped at 30%, probably. But...
Yeah. I mean, there's a number of things that we could do that we don't know about.
Hire code enforcement inspector for up to two years. But they would have to work in like a redevelopment area, which historic Goodyear is. So if we were growing at a rate that we felt like we needed to add staff for code enforcement, no guarantees until I get more... My hands dirtier. But it certainly appears to me that we could explore something like that and assign the person to the redevelopment area.
And are there still economic development opportunities available through CEDAC? Yeah.
You have to create jobs.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do that we aren't able to do. If we're entitlement and entitlement community, there's a lot more things we're able to do than we are right now. And I think, for me, that's the part of it. I look at this and I look at that list. And I think we... Because we're the largest... Aside from Maricopa County, we're the largest city in CEDAC. So our entitlement component is funding projects in Youngtown and Guadalupe and some of the very, very small communities... Wickenburg. We're paying for that out of what would be our theoretical federal entitlement. Much... Not much different than are we a donor state or, you know, a taking state from a federal tax perspective? But I don't want to be in that situation. I think we have a lot of unidentified needs in our community that we just... We haven't... We lacked funding. We've lacked opportunity. We've lacked really the ability. And I think this may give us the shot at doing that for really a short burst of time. Whether the funding goes away... If it goes away, it goes away for Maricopa County. It goes away for us. So whether it goes away or not is kind of irrelevant because it goes away. But if we can get it and there are things that we can do some really good work in the community, then why are we not doing it? If we don't have a staff... If it's not going to require a staff person and we're really talking about some staff time and $50,000. And we just last week talked about, you know, a half a billion-dollar budget. And I can't believe that we're going to slow down on 50 grand to bring somebody in to maybe open us up for the future.
So if Council... Okay. Bill?
I mean, Joe. I had to do it one time.
Are you saying you're not going to be asking for a staff person this budget year?
No.
I still am where I am. I... I don't want to expand the government. I'll put it to you that way. I think, based on the type of projects that we have here and funding, to me, 50,000 is still 50,000. And I just don't want to see it expanded.
Yes, Sherry?
Okay. Bill brought up a good point that got me thinking. So those two years in a row that we got zero. If our allocation was, give or take, 400,000... I'm just using round numbers. I'm sure it was probably a little bit less or whatever. So those two years, that $800,000 went to other cities that would have gone to us?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I think when we're looking at the net gain, I'm for that. I also like the idea. So we could use that. Because I know we've talked about some of the Loma Linda area, some revitalization in that area. Is that would be an acceptable area to do projects in?
Loma Linda is historic Goodyear.
Historic Goodyear, that whole area. That would be a good area to do some projects. And even though they're residential, those are things that we could work with the residences in those areas or the streets or the... How would that... What kind of projects would be acceptable?
So it will be interesting to see what happens when the new census comes out because the income... And then the income changes, especially from COVID-19. It's a moving target, I guess, poverty. We don't know... What we don't know yet. Right now, my understanding is that the Loma Linda historic Goodyear area is part of the revitalization or redevelopment area. So that would be slum and blight. So we could use up to 30% of the award on that. I don't know where that slide was exactly. And... But then, my understanding is north subdivisions. What is low-mod? That's why we were able to
Do more there.
give the streetlight projects there.
Okay. Yeah. I... That does really, when you bring about the donor state, that that's almost $1 million over two years that should have been coming to our citizens that went to other cities. And from what you said, sometimes it's just not good form to apply every year. They won't give you the same thing every year. And this way, we have control over our money. And you're not asking for a person this year. This is a future if it gets complicated. I'm good.
Any other comments? Well, I'll make my... You have an... Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, looking at some of the projects that they... We don't... We even put into some of them because it's not politically good to ask every single year as well. Because we'll probably get turned down. But there are some neat projects. Economic development. You know, Tolleson is redoing houses that are falling in disrepair in their neighborhoods. There's community centers. There's roads, sidewalks. All kinds of different projects out there that we haven't applied for because, yeah, we look like we're taking too much or, yeah, we don't have the funding to do it. So this way, we could be more consistent, I think, with it. I... Yeah. I like that we're not asking for a new body right now at this time and going forward. So, yeah. I think it's more control over the money that we would have gotten either way. So...
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to make a, a note that the reason this is before council today is because our three-year contract with the county is coming to an end. So we do have to affirmatively, uh, receive policy direction on whether to renew for another three years with the county or to become our own entitlement community. So I just wanted to clarify that. But in addition, knowing that once we become an entitlement community, whether or not it's now or three years from now or six years from now, it is unlikely that you backtrack and go back to the opposite direction. So we are not asking for a staff member now, and I honestly doubt we'd be asking for a staff member even in the next year. But knowing that this is beginning a program that would only continue to grow as we continue to grow as a community, we did want to make sure that council was aware eventually it will require dedicated resources that are beyond what we'd likely recap from those administrative costs. So we didn't want to leave that out because ultimately, you know, this program would just continue to grow and grow as our population grows. So just wanted to make a few clarifying comments. That's correct. The administrative would continue to grow, um, but we also didn't want to, you know, ask council to make this commitment to going to entitlement without acknowledging at some point, it likely would have some additional asks that go along with it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Laura?
This additional, uh, discussion has certainly been helpful and don't want to leave money on the table that we would otherwise get. The thing that I wasn't sure of is do we have a vision for what we would use it for? But based on what everybody's saying, that yes, there is plenty of need and, and plenty of things that we just never were able to ask for because it didn't fit the narrow box. So if the box is bigger and we have more discretion than, and we agree that there's ample need, then it, then it, then it does make sense.
Joe?
Uh, just a quick question of the city manager. Does this mean this will be coming back to us for a vote on the specific contract?
That's correct. So this work session is anticipation of which direction we would take to you during a business item.
So it will be on, okay, as long as there's a vote coming. Thank you.
Next week.
Next meeting, I think.
Next meeting.
Is what we're aiming for.
All right, I'm going to, okay, Molly, go ahead.
I just want to verify, regardless of whether we stay where we are or go to an entitlement city, there's going to be certain parameters that we have to do in order to spend that money, regardless of what kind of comprehensive plan we plan. Still has to be 70% low income and specific things. So don't think we're going to all of a sudden have a pie in the sky and $400,000 to do anything we want to with. Cause in, in, in years past, the reason why we haven't gotten money is because we had no shovel-ready projects. They weren't ready to go, so we didn't apply. And like it was stated, they didn't want Goodyear or, you know, Queen Creek or whoever to apply and get funds every single year because they only have a certain amount and they wanted to share it. But, uh, we generally were partially funded every time we ask for whatever we needed to do. And at that point, it was restoring 50-year-old water mains and then it was a little bit down Western Avenue, I think this for the benches or something. Maybe I was wrong on that. I could be wrong on the benches because I forgot who paid for them. But, um, and the other, it's just really been water mains or, or specific things like that. And it's been specifically in the neighborhoods that have been identified as low income. So we couldn't like build something out here if it didn't fit in that box. So just want everyone to understand that. And they've been very fair with Goodyear. Being, uh, working with the CBDG staff has been wonderful. They're very helpful. They walk us through whatever, they tell us when we need to beef it up or un-beef it or whatever we need to do so that we are successful. So I would like y'all to know it's, that they're, they're great to work with. The county has been wonderful. But until they know how much money they get, then they couldn't tell us how much we would get.
All right, I'm going to speak. Is everybody down? I think this is a great opportunity and I really like the fact that it comes back every so many years and they give you that choice. Or you can make a choice if you're unhappy about that. Our city is growing in every direction. Hiring someone to come to city to work for us for a good program? We're going to be afraid of that? No. We've been very aggressive to hire those that we need so that we can grow programs. And I think this is going to be a great growth. And if you look at the number of cities that is in this program and you compare them to the other, I think we're really, um, fit more with the other cities that are under entitlement. So if the, it becomes difficult, um, and you can't handle it, of course, we'll bring somebody on and everybody here will vote for it. Because you like us to push forward on our city. We don't need to stay stagnant and we need to go back. And, uh, there are other ways to do some of the things that was mentioned around the table as a city. So I, I'm definitely 100% for this. So thanks. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
So nothing more said on this? Um, we're going to re, reveal information at the next meeting, okay? Unless Julie has something more she wanted to say. Okay, no, being no further business, I'm going to adjourn this. Did I forget something? Oh, yeah. 10 minutes. I don't, I think we're giving, I think we're giving five minutes. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, May 11th, 2020. Please join Councilmember Hampton in the Pledge Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Lord, I just thank you for the day, Lord. I just thank you, uh, for this great city of Goodyear that you're, uh, that, uh, we're able to serve the people in, Lord. I just, uh, thank you for just all the staff and all of the first responders, healthcare workers and military and just everybody who's dealing with the COVID-19 right now in our community, Lord. Just be with them. Just thank you, Lord, for your protection and for just you being in control, Lord. When things are, when people are fearful and anxious, Lord, I just thank you that we can trust in you. I just, uh, also want to pray, Lord, uh, for wisdom, Lord, as we're making decisions for the people of Goodyear. God, just give us the direction to, uh, know what to do and make the best decisions for everybody in our community. I just thank you, Lord, for, um, everything you've done for us, Lord. And I just thank you for being such a great and loving and powerful God. Your name, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. All right, we do, um, everyone is present as it was in the work session. We have one communication item and that is an update from the city manager, a Goodyear um, response to CO COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I guess I sat in the wrong seat. So tonight I wanted to provide you with an update on our COVID-19 efforts here at the city of Goodyear. So I have a brief presentation and really, uh, look forward to, uh, conversation about where we are and where we've, uh, come from on this matter. So this has been definitely a marathon, not a sprint. We've been dealing with the COVID-19 situation now for about eight weeks. Um, just as a reminder, really started back on March 11th with a statewide emergency declaration. Of course, here in Goodyear, Mayor Lord signed an emergency declaration on March 19th. Governor Ducey signed his executive order, stay home, stay healthy, stay connected on March 31st. And now we're starting to see the transition back to opening. So we saw some of our retailers begin their reopening last week and as of today, restaurants, if they follow certain protocols, were able to reopen. But wanted to talk a little bit about, um, where we are. So as of today, according to the Arizona Department of Health Services, we've had just over 11,000 confirmed cases in Arizona with 542 confirmed deaths. About 6,000 of those cases are in Maricopa County. And in Goodyear, within our two zip codes, uh, that entitle all of Goodyear, we've had 85 positive cases as of today. We have 33 cases in the 85395 zip code and 52 cases in the 85338 zip code. So staff has spent a lot of time gathering and learning all of the information and providing resources to our residents. Those, this is just a snapshot of the different, um, resources that are available on our website. We have a city of Goodyear coronavirus page. Of course, we have a page dedicated to just supporting our local restaurants and we're working diligently now to contact all of our Goodyear restaurants to update our webpages to whether or not they're physically open for dining as of today. Nonprofit resources for those who are either in need or have time or resources to volunteer on nonprofit resources page. And I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking about small businesses, but we do have two webpages on top of our local restaurant page. but we do have two webpages on top of our local restaurant page available. And of course, information is always available through the Arizona Department of Health Services and the Centers for Disease Control. But I know last time I spent time updating council, there was a lot of conversation about small business assistance. And our role as a city, because we don't receive any direct funding through these programs, is to really focus on information and support. And there's a lot of information out there for our small businesses to navigate. In addition to the CARES Act, the two most common programs are the Paycheck Protection Program and the Emergency Injury Disaster Loan Program. But there's also a Community Development Financial Institutions Microloan Program, and there are grants through the Better Business Bureau Grant Program. So we're working to assist our local businesses. Economic Development did a survey, and it's actually still open. So they sent a survey out to all of our small businesses, and they have until this Friday, May 15th, to respond to the survey. But I wanted to share some of the preliminary results from our small businesses. We've received 122 responses, and 54 of those who answered said that they have requested financial assistance from the PPP program, and that 33 of them, or 61%, have received funds. Of the 34 respondents who have requested financial assistance from the EIDL program, eight of them, or 23%, have received funds. In this survey, 43 of our businesses, or 35%, have not sought financial assistance from any source. So we do continue to reach out to all of our businesses, offer assistance, help them navigate all of these different programs. And again, we're looking to get updated information on our restaurants. As of today, Economic Development has talked to 125 of our local restaurants, and 41 of them confirmed that they were opening for in-dining today. An additional seven others said that it wasn't today, but by the end of the week, once they get all of their protocols in. So President Trump had announced his guidelines for opening up America again. And it's a three-phase program where in Phase One, they were looking at a downward trajectory of flu-like symptoms and COVID symptoms over 14 days, downward trend of cases, and robust testing in place. Phase Two would happen when there was no evidence of rebound of virus. And then Phase Three, again, is no evidence of rebound of virus. And Phase Three is essentially being open, or what we'll call the new normal. Governor Ducey used this slide in one of his recent press conferences where he talked about how Arizona was headed in the right direction, that we were seeing a downward trajectory of influenza and COVID-like illness, a downward trajectory of positive tests, treating all patients without crisis care, and expanding the testing availability. And so with this is when he began some of those limited openings that we've seen with retail and restaurants. So Team Goodyear, it's been our top priority, and we've been looking to make sure that we were able to pivot and adapt when it was the right time to begin the reopening process. We wanted to make sure that we were able to reopen safely, not only for our residents and our customers, but also for our staff. We are going to follow the three-phased plan, and there is going to be a continued focus on online services. I think one of the silver linings out of the virus is that we've learned technology can really assist and really help, not only us as we conduct our city business, but all of our customers. So as we've been getting ready to open up Goodyear again, we've been paying attention to the physical space. And so you will see in public areas here in Goodyear that you will see barriers between the customer service areas. And I really want to give kudos to our facilities team. These are custom-designed barriers done at a much more efficient, and I must say, a much nicer-looking product than if you were just to buy something. And so if you look to the visual on the left, you'll see the stickers on the floor for distancing, and that's the utility payment area. You'll see on the beam that is, there is a guideline, a poster, talking about symptoms, and there's a hand sanitizing unit right there on the wall. It's white, so it kind of mixed in. The middle picture is our development continuum, and you really have to look closely, but you'll see that there are black columns. And between all the black columns is a plexiglass, very similar to what you'll see here in this courtroom that we have over on this other side. And then you see the blue markings on the floor for customers. And then finally, on the far right, that is the customer service desk at City Hall, where as of 8:00 this morning, we've begun, again, staffing these public areas. These are some of the flyers that you'll see throughout the public areas and also the behind employee areas in the city. Employees are asked to check their symptoms prior to reporting for their shift. And further, they're asked to stay home or go home if they're not feeling well. I think gone are the days of pushing through when someone doesn't feel well to get to the end of the day. You know, the safety and the health of, again, our employees and our residents are the top priority. So the city of Goodyear officially started Phase One as of today. So as of today, Monday, May 11th, we did open our city buildings to the public. All of our playgrounds have been opened, including restrooms. The playgrounds will be cleaned, sanitized once a day, and the restrooms are being cleaned, sanitized four times a day. Basketball, volleyball, tennis, and pickleball courts are all opened. They are drop-in only. We are not taking reservations during Phase One. And in addition, Roscoe Dog Park is now open. In Phase One, because it is limited, we're still trying to keep groups to less than 10. We have not opened our city council meetings or planning and zoning meetings to the public, and the skate park and the splash pad at this time remain closed. The Ramadas are open, but again, not reservation. They're drop-in only. So Phase Two is a to-be-determined. So really, what we will now continue to do is monitor Phase One. I know the governor will continue to watch our numbers, and hopefully, we continue to see a downward trajectory. If so, I would anticipate Phase Two to be relatively quick in coming. So we are ready to pivot to Phase Two upon that guidance from the governor. And at that time, you will see city council and planning and zoning meetings reopen to the public. You will see the skate park, the splash pad. And very happy to say that you'll also see select Parks and Recreation programs begin to open. We are ready right now. We've picked a date to be ready, so June 1st. We hope to be able to open our rec programs to be available for reservations and then begin on June 8th. So that is a to-be-determined date, but I just want to assure council and the public that we know how important those programs are to our community, and we're working diligently to be ready to open them safely. And then finally, in Phase Three is when you'd see the mayor remove our declaration of emergency, and we would return, well, you'll see at the top of the slide, to essentially our new normal. I do believe that we'll continue to see some telecommuting, especially in Phase Two, a little bit less in Phase Three. But I do think that there's been some lessons learned during the virus that will stay with us. Some people are even saying they don't know if handshakes will come back into fashion and business meetings. And so I think that there's a lot to be seen as to what happens as we continue to move forward. I wanted to share, you know, really how proud I am and how amazed I've been with the creativity that we've seen here in Goodyear. On the top left, you'll see an image where our Human Resources Department came up with a virtual first-ever employee orientation. You know, having a new employee onboard into the city is a very important event to make them feel welcome and get off to a good start. And so you'll see in this image, Mayor Lord in her kitchen welcoming our first-ever virtual orientation. Just below that is a picture of the Maricopa County Goodyear branch. On April 22nd, they began distributing materials through a curbside pickup program. It's been a huge success, and we've had more, we've had 316 vehicles, to be exact, come through the line, and cardholders have picked up over 1,000 pieces of materials over the last two and a half weeks. Moving to the top middle, on April 20th, our fire department created a two-person advanced life support unit, staffed with one firefighter paramedic and one firefighter EMT to address low-acuity calls and triage patients with COVID-19 symptoms. As of May 9th, this unit has run 82 calls. This special unit will be operational through next Sunday, and if necessary, we can deploy it again if we see an increase in our call volume and spikes in COVID-19 cases. The bottom middle is Goodyear PD hosted their annual law enforcement torch run virtually to raise awareness for Special Olympics. Top left, the Arts and Culture Commission hosted a virtual chalk-on-the-walk contest where artists created their artwork and submitted their entry via social media. Pictured here is the artwork of one of the winners, artist Ryan Williams, a Goodyear resident and teacher at Desert Edge High School. Ryan dedicated his entry to healthcare workers. And then finally, in the lower right, the Parks and Recreation Department has been providing e-gaming opportunities for the community throughout the months of April and May. Some statistics is they've had over 11,000 people reach through social media posts, 254 unique subscribers to the department's YouTube channel, 24 hours of stream time, and over 4,000 people who watched the stream. And I wanted to note that this will continue through the end of May with a variety of games for all ages. I also wanted to send a big thank you to the Goodyear team. Everyone has really pitched in to help out their fellow departments, and everyone, we're just simply stronger together. So in the top left-hand picture is our Parks and Recreation team helping our Facilities Department fill hand sanitizer bottles for the rest of the departments. In the middle, you'll see our Public Works team, oh, I'm sorry, bottom right, bottom left, excuse me. The Public Works team used technology to get things done through a virtual meeting. What's unusual there is everyone has their pictures, has their cameras on. I think as this gone on, people have more and more not turned their cameras on. At the top middle, Public Works Solid Waste Crew is having a morning startup meeting while practicing social distancing. And just to note that our bulk collections were an essential service, and we're proud to be able to continue that to the community without interruption during the pandemic. The middle bottom is the Finance Procurement Division held their first ever virtual live bid opening to ensure the integrity of the RFP process and the bids received. And this was so successful, it may be something that continues beyond the COVID virus. Top left, our Fire Department Support Services Group built sprayers and distributed to all vehicles to decontaminate their equipment after a call. And then finally, we have a picture of some of our PD officers wearing masks as they responded to a call for service at Abrazo West to help keep the public safe. But I'd also like to thank the mayor and council for your leadership and guidance as we continue to navigate through these uncharted times and do what is best for the citizens of Goodyear and our employees. And finally, I wanted to thank our community. With so much uncertainty and sadness, what's been happening as a result of the pandemic, we've been inspired by the outpouring of support from the community with messages of hope and words of encouragement, and these are just a few of them. The first is a mural at one of our fire stations that said, "Thank you for all you do. Love our heroes." Another thank you message. And then we also had the Rotary Club of Goodyear Pebble Creek, who donated 200 face shields to our Goodyear fire members. So just very proud of our community, proud of the Goodyear team, and, you know, wanted to end by saying, "Goodyear is a strong and vibrant community. We care about each other, and together, we are resilient."
Very nice report. Thank you. May I ask if any of you have a question on any of it? Yes, Joe?
On the, you had given us some information before on some of the unemployment for Goodyear. I just wondered if that's gone up, or started, or at least the what percentage has it gone up? And when you do your surveys on the economic development side, any idea? And again, don't have to answer that right now, but any idea on what percentage of our restaurants or some of our small biz retails are not just in financial distress, but significant financial distress to the point where, you know, if this thing keeps going longer, they may not be coming back. So what percentage are in that kind of shape would be nice to kind of just get a gist of what may be coming down the road as far as that is concerned?
Thank you, Councilmember. It's the unemployment. I don't believe we have the next monthly numbers, but as soon as we have those, we'll include those in a daily report. I know on the national scene, I think they're talking about like a 14% unemployment rate. So we do certainly expect a spike, hopefully with retail and restaurants beginning to reopen. We'll see that come back down. But yes, it'll be very informative to see what that next series of numbers are. And as far as working with all of our small businesses and our large businesses, I'm unaware of any that have actually planned to close permanently because of the COVID. I know a lot are really struggling. So I think as soon as we can get reopen and, you know, get the business coming back to the door, I mean, it's certainly our priority, but appreciate the thoughts. We're in great communication with them, and I have a report I'll be sharing with council.
I appreciate that, because that's going to be the key as we start to come out of this and start getting stronger. I can tell you by my experience I had over the weekend with one of them on carryout, there's a lot of pent-up demand out there. So I'm hoping this thing turns around pretty quick, and there are no spikes, you know, in the COVID as we kind of move forward. So I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Yes, Sherry.
First of all, I want to thank you and your team for the last couple of months, all the hard work and really uncharted waters. I mean, you can plan for something, but I don't think anyone planned for exactly how this all laid out, except for maybe Bill's group. So I do want to pass on that, because I know it's been very tough for everybody right now in learning new things. I have a couple of questions. The first one was, and I might email you this, about some of the private HOAs that have playgrounds and ballparks and pickleball. Have we been in touch with them to let them know what our Phase One is to kind of help get them on the same page? And then my other two questions, I'll just give them all to you once, because they kind of go together. I know in the president's plan, theaters, movie theaters were supposed to be in Phase One, and I don't know if the governors addressed movie theaters or swimming pools as it's 100 degrees here, those two areas yet.
Thank you. So with regard to the HOAs through our Neighborhood Services Department, I don't know if it's already gone out, but it's definitely our intent. We just put together our plan over the last few days in order to open today. We've been very visible on social media about our Phase One, but we do want to be able to share how we've come to those decisions. Because to actually, your second question, I think that the president's plan, as it was rolled out, was guidelines, and he did specifically say that each state would be able to make decisions on their own as they saw fit. When the governors made his last two press conferences, he didn't really talk about reopening in phases. So it wasn't exactly following the plan that the president had laid out. And so to your specific question, we do not understand that movie theaters or pools are able to open under Governor Ducey's orders. Now, we know that May 15th is the next, that's when he extended the stay-at-home order. And so I think as we get closer to that date, we should have some additional guidance as to whether or not everything is opened. Oh, I should mention gyms. That's the other question we get the most. So it's the pools, the gyms, and the movie theaters. And so as of right now, in Arizona, it's my understanding under the governor's orders, those are not able to reopen.
You're reaching out to the HOAs and stuff, because I think they're going to follow the city's lead as we open, they'll open their amenities to kind of match what we're doing. So I appreciate that.
And I think if I could just add another comment, what you're also seeing among the cities is we're staying very much connected to each other, and we're talking about, you know, what is each community doing? Because there's so much of this uncharted territory, and we're all trying to digest, interpret, and figure out how to move forward. I know from the city of Goodyear's perspective, you know, we felt strongly that if one of our residents was able to go into a restaurant and sit down and have a meal, they should be able to come to our public building and pay a water bill. And so that's really that analysis that we had to make, because there was nothing in the governor's order that said, "Oh, city halls can reopen." So we're having to take the information and really interpret it, and great thanks to the work and the legal team and just all of the city departments as we work through those questions. So I know the HOAs are trying to do the same thing.
Julie, thank you so much. I think no more questions? All right.
I'm going to stay put if that's okay.
I just wondered what you're saying for, yes. For those that have just tuned in to the city council meeting, I'm going to have the city clerk give you information on how to participate in tonight's meeting.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the building is closed. However, our residents have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov, and they can view the meeting using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using Granicus. And the public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you very much. So let's go to the consent agenda. Would you please meet this consent agenda, city clerk?
And just for the record, Mayor, there were no comments at this point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Number two, approval of minutes. Number three, approve the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility centrifuge purchase. Number four, recommend approval of a liquor license acquisition of control for PF Chang's China Bistro. Number five, adopt resolution number 2020-2050, approving a new memorandum of understanding between the city of Goodyear and the United Goodyear Firefighters Local 4005, commencing on July 1st, 2020, and expiring on June 30th, 2021. Number six, adopt resolution number 2020-2051, approving a new memorandum of understanding between the city of Goodyear and the Goodyear Police Officers Association, commencing on July 1st, 2020, and expiring on June 30th, 2023. Number seven, accept the dedication of three public utility sidewalk and access easements from Microsoft Corporation required for the development of the Phoenix 70-PB 303 project. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right. Can I have a motion in a second to approve items two through seven? Do I hear that motion?
So move.
Second. Did he, I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a second from Councilman Campo. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. He wasn't looking at me. I wasn't sure. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Well, good. We went through that quite rapidly. We didn't, so we're down to council comments or reports, current events. All right, city manager, do you have anything to report?
I do. Thank you, Mayor and council. Pursuant to our ordinance, I am obligated to introduce to you our, any new directors that we bring into the city. Due to the limited participation, I am going to virtually introduce our new engineering director, Sumit Mohan. Sumit will lead the activities of the Engineering Department, which includes managing the capital improvement program, street transportation and traffic operations. He will also lead plan reviews, permits, and inspections for assisting existing and future residents, businesses, and development partners who wish to develop or build in Goodyear. He has decades of professional engineering and leadership experience in Arizona's public sector. For the past year, Sumit has served as our Deputy Engineering Director, and he has demonstrated his leadership by fostering a team-oriented environment with a focus on staff development, quality customer service, and collaboration. He has a Bachelor of Technology in Civil Engineering, Master of Science in Civil Engineering, and a Master of Public Administration, plus a multitude of professional licenses and certifications. Prior to arriving in Goodyear, Sumit worked for the city of Phoenix for nearly 19 years, supporting development services and water services. I would also like to say Sumit is one of the most engaging individuals that you could meet. He radiates great energy, and he has definitely been a positive addition to the Engineering Department and the Goodyear team. So congratulations, Sumit, on your promotion to Director of Engineering. I would also like to take a moment to virtually introduce our new assistant to the mayor, Resalva Zimmerman. Resalva joined the Goodyear team on April 29th and quickly had to acclimate herself not only to a new job, but working in a virtual environment. Her duties provide, include providing direct assistance to Mayor Lord and supervising the mayor and city council team. Resalva came to us from the Arizona Department of Economic Security, where she had most recently served as our statewide program manager in the Director's Office of Community Engagement. She has split her career between public service and the nonprofit social service sector. Her experience in the public service also includes positions in public safety and public health management. Resalva graduated summa cum laude from NAU with a bachelor's degree in public administration and earned her Public Manager Certification through ASU's College of Public Service and Community Solutions. We are excited to have her onboard and welcome her to Team Goodyear. Thank you, Mayor.
Very nice. Well, excuse me. I don't talk all week because I have nobody at home. So my voice is having somewhat of difficulty that I have to talk now. So you'll have to excuse me. I don't want anybody to think that I'm ill. All right, so the manager is, and you've heard, no comments, no asking to the, to the city manager on anything? All right, let's go. The next meeting will be a regular meeting on May 18th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.